Good evening and welcome to the September 12, 2017 regular meeting of Detroit Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and amendments of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city councilor. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wardman and Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-on sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, tablets, PBAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. The roll call, Ms. Arneke, please.
Mr. Apidian.
Here.
Ms. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Ms. Faison.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Corren.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Zanzika.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here.
Quorum present, item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Ms. Cooper, seconded by Mr. Faison. Roll call, please, Ms. Arneke.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Faison.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Corren.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Apidian.
Yes. Item number three on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the August 22, 2017 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please? Mr. Zanzika, seconded by Mr. Corren. Roll call, Ms. Arneke, please.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Faison.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Apidian.
Yes.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes.
Item number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one, we will move to item number five on the agenda, preliminary site plan review. File number SPJPLN 2017-0020, proposed Stony River Steakhouse in Grill, south side of Big Beaver, west of Livershaw, part of 111 West Big Beaver, section 28, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District. Mr. Carlisle.
Yes, thank you, and good evening to the planning commission. Before us tonight is an application for an 8,000-square-foot restaurant. It's going to be located in the parking and boulevard area of the Columbia Center. This proposed location, just for reference, this is Livershaw, south side of Big Beaver. We're located somewhere right there. So it's very close, very close, so in fact, you can probably see the site from this building itself. The applicant is proposing 8,000-square-foot restaurant, approximately 190 seats. Pull up to the... Here's a site plan for reference. The building will be located front adjacent to Big Beaver. It's located within the existing parking lot. This is a very nice landscaped median that is a direct protection connection from the Columbia Center itself. The applicant is proposing a very detailed and robust plaza, sleek seating area in front of the building. And along this elevation, it's going to be a proposed service area, but the trash enclosure will actually be located inside the building itself. So it'll be used, it'll be a roll-up door that will be accessed to the trash area itself. Primary building entrance is located at this location, the primary parking, this area around the site. Access to the site will remain as-is. There's no proposed access, new access points off of Big Beaver. And we do note that the building does comply with all the Big Beaver bulk requirements. In 2008, there was a parking plan that indicated, that was submitted for a restaurant, this exact same size, that was approved in 2008. It was again reviewed by the engineering department for this development and found that it is still valid parking study. So the applicant has provided sufficient parking for the site based on the engineer's review. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan. The landscape plan is in compliance with the ordinance requirements. We do know, however, that there is a discrepancy between the site plan and landscape plan that needs to be rectified with final site plans submitted, as well as detailed calculations were not submitted on the landscape plan that need to be included in their recent edit. We did ask the applicant to provide a, either 3D rendering or models, as well as a material sample board for the planning commission to review. In regards to the site, we do support the site, support the development, and recommend approval. However, there's one issue that we have had discussions with the applicant on, and so the clarification is. The primary entrance to the building, again, as I noted, is in this location. As I noted, they have a very robust outdoor patio space. We didn't see an entrance from Big Beaver to this, to this location, a clear path of delineation to allow someone to enter the site directly from Big Beaver. There appears in early elevations to be a small access door here to a bar of the proposed restaurant. The applicant did indicate that there will be access to this location, as well as a more defined access location to this, to this primary entrance. However, they were going to submit revised plans for planning commission to consider. So if the planning commission does find that access is sufficient from Big Beaver, we do recommend approval as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle before we get the applicant to present the project? If not, is the applicant ready?
Oh, yes.
If you may, please step up to the mic.
Okay. Any...
Good evening. I'm Alan Karolick with Kirkwood Development in Columbia Center, the applicant, and we're here on behalf of our site plan approval with you folks, and we thank you for taking a look at what we had to offer. And our suggestion is, is that we have Bob Zantner with Yamazaki Associates as our architect who's handled the site planning and so forth, and been involved in overseeing the design of the building. We have Keith Wheaton, he's a project manager with Stony River in behalf of this project. So our thought was, is that if it's okay, we'll ask Keith to come up here and give you a little understanding and explanation of Stony River, and then we can go on to more details as you might question. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, Keith, if you would, please.
Good evening. I'm Keith Wheaton with Stony River. We're based out of Nashville, Tennessee. We have currently 12 Stony River locations. And to give you a little bit of an idea about Stony River, we're an upscale steakhouse. We have hand-cut steaks, gourmet entrees, and we're served in a very sophisticated atmosphere. We pride ourselves on service, extraordinary service, and we look forward to being a drug. Thank you.
Thank you. What are the names up here? The reference?
Again, my name is Robert Santner from Yamazaki Architects, and we've had the good fortune of being involved with Columbia Center since the mid-'80s, when I was a young man, and with Alan. So our job is to try and bring this restaurant into the complex and into the composition and the quality and the character of Columbia Center, which has been a source of pride for our firm and for hopefully for the community. You know, I know for sure for Kirkwood, we're happy to be here and be involved with it. So we wanted to make sure that this building would have the same quality aspects in terms of materials, the presentation to the city, to be able to work within the form-based code and enhance the community in the way that, that code has been anticipated. And we think the solution is, is a good one. It's a quality restaurant. Each one of the Stony River restaurants is unique, and it is responsive to its, its market and its location, and I think we tried to bring that bear here as well. So in terms of the presentation of Big Beaver, we have a lot of transparency on the north and east and west sides of the bar and dining rooms, and it will be a real animated spot as you make your way home along Big Beaver and things start to wind up in the city in the evening time. We have reworked, and that rendering there, which hasn't been seen before, is showing the building in the context of the Columbia Center. So we're not replicating the Columbia Center's architectural language. We're trying to bring this brand here close within the complex and yet have the quality of materials speak for themselves, the proportions of the windows, and things are consistent, and the square proportions of the windows are consistent with the Columbia Center and its presentation, its location on access with the composition of the master plan, make it a feature, of course, and will be a nice addition to the Big Beaver corridor. So we're excited about that. The transparency, again, will enliven that. It's going to have a real close proximity to the sidewalk and the... After discussions with the restaurant and with Kirkwood, I'd like to hand out this, this additional supplement, which I promised in my response, which is to show, sorry. So the attention, our intentions for the entrance access along Big Beaver, which is essentially an eight-foot wide access directly into the bar area from the right-of-way on the north facade.
Thank you.
Shows up, which will be in this location here on the site. So this can be front of Big Beaver, and there is a sidewalk that, actually, this is the definition of sidewalk here coming from, unfortunately, the way the rendering is done, you walk right along the edge here, and you walk right into the bar area here. So it's considered the main entrance to the building or a primary entrance.
It's a straight shot in from the sidewalk.
Correct. And then obviously, the, the valley area is on the side and is connected via a paving treatment.
Oh, yeah.
A paving treatment that would, you know, plenty of water within the context of the restaurant's canopy area and its outdoor seating area. I think they're contemplating soft seating.
Yeah.
Do you want to elaborate on what kind of service or areas are contemplated for the outdoor seating area?
Yeah, what we have on the, on the patio is no service, no dinner service, but we do serve appetizers and drinks. It's soft seating. It's in the, in the documents that were passed around, the first two pages are actually photographs of our latest Stony River that we opened and the, what our patio would look like in that instance. The second two are also patios and rubbers and the stone and everything that we're using on this particular building, to just give you an idea of the, of the overall look of a patio.
I have a question.
Curious, on the entrance off of Big Beaver, will there be signage or some type of delineation?
On the door.
On the door?
On the door. We would have our name on the door, yes. Sidewalk would be about eight foot wide coming right off of there. It's not a very deep sidewalk because of the proximity of the building up there, but there would be landscaping on both sides, and we would have our sign on the door.
Yes, Mr. Bet.
Could you explain the entrance door, where is that located on the plan?
This, this is a totally different building. That's a, that's a building that I'm...
Oh, my.
So...
I got me a little confused. Okay, I understand.
But I put that in there because it's the same style, the same type of stone, the patio.
Got it. Okay.
Right.
So again, the bar entrance is here with that direct access, but this, this special paving that's being contemplated here actually brings you around to this entrance. This is the valley area here, so cars will drop off and enter into this area, which gets you to the dining room and bar area that way. So it is connected, and there will be the ability to bring patrons in, in either direction.
Is that access point, the entrance point off of Big Beaver, is that the same stamped concrete or the material that's an entire patio area?
Yes. I mean, that's, that's anticipated right now to be that stamped paved area, so there, that is all consistent. And it's, there may be, we may adjust, we're in the process right now to finding the planting beds and so on and so forth, so there's, that definition is fine, but that is the attempt.
Mr. Zantner, just a quick, I guess maybe more of a building department question. Is that access point within the right-of-way and having a different type of sidewalk pavement texture, does that, does that meet any kind of special requirement by the building department? If it's within the, the actual sidewalk that's in the right-of-way of the city?
Within the right-of-way? I don't think it is in the right-of-way.
Is it not within the right-of-way?
No, the, the sidewalk for the city is here.
Okay, okay.
And they're creating...
Okay, so there's that.
An entry point there.
Okay.
There'll be a landscape treatment, and then the special paving inside the center.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Bet.
A couple of questions. The, the plans that you showed us here, the dash line, does it represent a canopy that's depicted in this photograph?
Yes.
Oh, the dash.
It's...
I refer to this line that comes out.
No.
What does the dash line represent here?
That's a canopy edge.
Correct, and I'm asking, does it represent, is it represented by this type of canopy as opposed to... There's another one, but... See, these are different than what I...
Right. It's, it's, if you look at the rendering, there are, there are supports to this canopy, and the canopy is seven to eight feet deep from that.
So that rendering, where is the public sidewalk?
The public sidewalk is actually here on the rendering. It's going to hurt the perspective.
It's really not shown, unfortunately.
Yeah.
This is not a Yamazaki rendering.
No, no.
Well, all I'm doing is to make sure that we understand what you're proposing and what you're showing, you got to...
No. The canopy actually comes to this point here. The building enclosed space is setback from the property line at 11 feet there.
Essentially, if you see that, that white shrubbery?
Mm-hmm.
The sidewalk is literally on this side of it.
Right.
Literally, you know, there's just enough room for planting between the sidewalk and the patio.
Right. The railing that's shown in this rendering, is that going to be the railing that's along Big Beaver, or is there a different style?
No, we're thinking of different, a different approach rather than other, but there has to be a separation there.
Tell me about the railing that you're proposing.
We're using Drissa Metz Landscap Architects.
Yeah, some of your initial thoughts, anyway, we're to do something a little bit more artful, but not at three feet.
Can you just put it up on the stairs?
Yeah, I apologize, yes. Yes.
Timber or metal?
It's actually wood, in this case. It's wood, but we may elect based on maintenance requirements and so on to do something else. But the idea would be to have some for artful wall that's at the three-foot elevation to create that separation, or a green separation of sorts, or a combination thereof, but it wouldn't be along those lines necessarily. And we're in discussion with the owner currently to finalize those. We have a big application there.
All right. I guess what I'm trying to understand is what is going to separate the public wall from your patio?
Yeah.
Is it going to be green? Is it going to be railing?
Combination. Combination. Green and structured separation.
Planting and inside, inside that plant that shows what I call that white hedge is, is the patio, and on the patio will be the, the enclosure, the railing on the inside.
Right. Along this line.
Yeah.
If you're proposing, you mentioned earlier, what you showed earlier, something that is more in, in line with that wood product, would that kind of clothes off the view to the actual shrubbery, or you're playing their landscape, I mean, with that?
No, I think the idea is to have some permeability through it.
Okay, okay.
And also, we're not talking about six-foot-high areas. It's really just a, it's just a delineating the right-of-way, the sidewalk and the right-of-way versus the seating areas, you know? And so we're, we're in the process of developing that.
Okay.
But it's going to be a combination of green and structured separation.
Yes, Mr. Bet.
Question. How wide is that space between the sidewalk and your fence, where the green space is going to be? How, how deep is that?
Right now, it's, it's, we're looking at one to three feet.
One to three feet.
Yeah. Depending on what the ultimate composition of that separation is.
I prefer something closer to three feet, only because bicycles and stuff, handlebars hitting your fence and hard stuff like that.
True.
Are you proposing the actual fence right up against a sidewalk, or a setback of one to two feet and...
We're working on the soft landscaping and then the structured separation behind it.
And, and then landscaping also? So you have landscaping basically on both sides of the fence?
Yeah, that would be ideal. That's not the way that we have it in our mind now, because we're, we're trying to not push the building. We're playing, you know, the dimension game right now, but if we, ideally, yes, we'd like landscape on both, soft scape on both sides of the fence. Yes.
This is the first I've seen about the, the fence. I don't think that was indicated in the original packet that we got. I, this is Michigan group. I, I'm not impressed with a, a wood fence. Why would you not choose more of a painted metal or iron that would be much more sustainable with salt and snow?
I think there's, there's aspects to the, the design that are using a Ipe wood for some of the soffit areas under the balconies here, and the landscape architects' thought was to try and pick up on some of that natural character, kind of...
What is Ipe wood?
Ipe is a very hard, dense wood that's resistant to moisture and insect penetration and so on, so it's a little bit more robust than we think of a cedar fence or something like that.
Right.
So you're absolutely right about that. So this is part of the dialogue that's going on between owner and ourselves, so we can put forward a design that's acceptable to all the parties. But the, the thought is to create a barrier that is an artful, artfully put-together structured barrier that has some permeability to it and that we can balance with landscape on either side or soft scape on either side.
Thank you.
Could you talk about the materials?
Sure. So as a matter of fact, this is a product right here on the board here, which is meant in this case to be a part of the soffit of the building hall underneath here. This is the stone that's represented on the renderings that you're seeing, which is kind of an ashlar semi-regulately coarsed natural stone, actual stone, dimensional stone. The accent elements where the signage is attached is a granite face, so it's a contrast to the split face of this, although it'll be a honed finish to it, it won't be polished, so it'll have a more grayish mottled effect, which will set off the color of the brand for Stony River. And that in combination with the metal canopies, which are a, a black tone here and the black in the framing, will be a classic look to the field of the...
What is that metal?
This is just a kind of coated metal, aluminum.
Okay.
Yeah. So those are the basic materials. Obviously, clear glass or low-e glass in any event throughout the building, and we think it will be a really attractive look, this with the black tones, accent tones and black signage.
What is the sample in the upper left of it?
This is just a larger field of this, just to show what that character of the underside of the soffit would be on the canopies.
We have, we have a unique arrangement of materials in that we've got a natural stone, real stone, and we have granite, and, you know, on the field of those elevations, you've got honed granite, so we've got some very durable, lifelong, classic, traditional materials in this building.
Mr. Tagle.
Can you tell me how many parking spaces are in excess of the required? Could then lose another two parking spaces and still comply with parking requirements? I'll tell you why I'm asking once you answer my question.
I don't have any, I don't know the answer to that. I know that based on their...
I think the answer is yes, but...
Okay, the reason I'm asking is this, this front end between the building and the street scheme with what they want to do seems very tight to me. I'm not quite sure, I'm, I'm not picking up off the site plan. I see a couple of dimensions that are almost 11 feet from the building facade to some point, and I don't know if that's the edge of the sidewalk or the property line or what it is. So I was wondering if you're looking at the site plan, if they were to push the building only back another 10 feet and lose two more parking spaces, that would free them up to replicate more of what they've indicated on their previous...
Mr. Bet, they have over 400 spaces just north of the Columbia Center, not including the parking that's, that's in their location, so I don't think losing two spaces to make this more functional is going to hurt the overall parking of the site.
Okay, all right. Would that be something that you would consider? And I guess I'm not sure which gentleman to ask.
Yeah, can I actually maybe restate something here to make sure everybody, the drawings, admittedly, don't make it very clear, and apologize for this, but what, if you look at some of it, there is a canopy extension, and we'll look at it on the perspective, but there's a canopy extension that comes out in front of the building. So part of this building is, is covered under eight to 10 feet of canopy, roughly. So that is, that is one of the things. So we have quite a lot of hardscape, landscape patio scape in front of the building, which, so this line is not the building. This line's the building, and with a canopy in this vicinity, which is an extension of the roof, you know, it's just, it's not some soft fabric or anything like that, it's the real part of the building. So there is room, you know, to create more transitional space, for example. You know, that's what you're thinking, right?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at these pictures, and there's no way that what we're seeing in this plan is going to be even close to what we're seeing here. You're not going to get soft seating out there. What you've shown are two top tables out there, and with the doors swinging out, I mean, again, I haven't seen a layout on this plan, how the furniture is going to be positioned out there.
Right.
All I'm saying is, if, if you want to, you know, you've shown us this as previous developments by this...
That is really for material aesthetics. That's all that's trying to express.
That seating group is contemplated to be...
Over here.
Right.
I got it.
In front there, where...
I've got it, I've got it. I, I just think, I mean, in all of your renderings here, you've got more space in all of these, all of these pictures than you do have here. And I just think that it's going to be a very tight space up there, and I'm not sure if, if, I don't know if you're not wanting to slide the building back a few feet and lose two parking spaces, if that's an issue or not.
I don't think, correct if I'm wrong, and I don't think the parking is what concerns us, we're concerned about this feature here.
Yeah, we're, we're also trying to keep a balance because of the park area that we have there now, you know?
I mean, we can, we can...
I, I think we're splitting hairs here. I don't think by moving that building back, and I don't say you have to move it back 10 feet, but move it back some distance to give yourself a little bit more space up in front at the sidewalk. I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if those trees, if those trees are, are positioned accurately, maybe they are.
Yeah, they're surveyed, and they're accurate locations.
Yeah.
Is your concern that patio's area in front of buildings not large enough?
Right.
And, or you'd like more green space between the sidewalk and the patio area?
I think you could accomplish both. I, my, my primary reason for questioning was the patio. My primary reason for questioning was the patio's too narrow. It's going to seem very small up there.
It's much, this is much larger than what you're showing.
I understand. The area, our actual patio per se is here with the soft seating. This is actually, it's a covered walkway that allow access around this side of the building. But there's, there's no seating, no tables or anything out here.
Yeah, that's not what the plans that were submitted to us. So, there is no tables out there.
The only tables are going to be over at the patio area. A lot. And how many tables? How many tables?
Seating.
It's like we have five seating arrangements.
Well, if you're saying that there's no tables, no seating, it'll be up between the building and the right of way, then it's a different story in my opinion.
Yeah, that's not a dining area, seating area. It's a covered walkway. It's underneath our hard can.
Joe, you stand over there. Your drawings, not this one, but the submitted drawings indicate two top tables along there. And when we're talking about it would be nice to have softscape in front of and behind the fence, you know, I guess I'm not quite sure, you know, I know you have columns coming down there.
Yes.
And I don't know exactly, I can't see them on your furniture plan per se.
Yeah, they're not laid out on the furniture plan.
Right.
Around that area is just basically a covered walk.
But the columns holding up the canopy.
The columns, you are correct, in the original submitted, the two top tables show.
That's an earlier concept and between the landscape architects and the architect and Stoney River, the details, I just haven't had a chance to get that addressed and we were hopeful that we would get approval with the understanding we have to be satisfied with staff or whomever that when we finally get that final seating arrangement.
Any other questions for the applicant? I think they've clarified this aspect of where the seating is at. Mr. Trent.
Back in, I think it was 2011, you had, you were envisioning, this is at a Troy Chamber of Commerce business, building management meeting, you were the chair, I believe at the time. And you envisioned a restaurant. I'm glad to see it's finally coming to the central house. Exactly. The only difference was back then, you were envisioning a Crystal Palace look, all glass, that I was hoping that would happen. Didn't happen, but that's okay. The other thing was, I was just at Sedona Tap House just before I got here, they've got that second deck, boy, is it lovely out there, up there. What do you think of the second deck, guys? I'm just putting it out there. Just a thought. Anyway, thanks.
It's difficult. It's difficult to get in that restaurant. And they achieved another 69 spaces up there on that second deck. Can't even get into the parking lot.
But you've got space.
Yes.
You can do it.
Yes.
Oh, one other thing, what's going to happen to Troy Traffic Jam now? We're taking up all those big spaces for those great cars.
We have specific agreement to accommodate, Stoney River's agreed to accommodate the traffic jam.
Good. We don't want to lose that.
That's in, that's in the agreement.
Great.
Mr. Sana.
Your internal dumpster with the roll door and the, is that something that you, is this the first time you've utilized that?
We use it in most of our locations.
You find it works, works well?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a, I think it's a good solution to a four-sided building.
It's generally a front to glass floor. It holds up nicely. It's worked out very well. It's a compactor.
So, where would the truck that empties the refuge in that enclosed area, is that like a compactor or is it a, is it a compactor?
Yeah, our loading space area is here in this location.
Oh, okay.
Roll doors in this spot here.
I was curious, I mean, is there a rear exit to the building if you wanted to go to the parking lot to the east of the building? Or do you have to walk all the way around the building or do you?
You have to walk either this way or the other way. There's a staff exit. I don't know if it's emergency exit. I have to look at the. An emergency, okay, yeah, so there is an emergency out on that side, but not ingress. So, the only ingress would be to those two points.
I think Mr. Sanziger raises a good question because, again, we live in Michigan and I don't like walking out in the snow if I don't, if I don't have to. If my car is parked out here in the, in the rear.
It's a long walk.
It's a long walk and we have other places that we have the exact same problem already. So, I, I would hope you might reconsider that. Is there an exit over here somewhere on the west side?
Well, that's just a.
So, you do have to walk all the way around the front of the building?
No, not the front.
To the rear, you can walk to the rear.
You can walk.
You can't walk around with that.
There's a direct, there's also a walkway right there. That is a doorway right there. So, you can walk from here directly.
Is there a canopy over the rear walkway?
There isn't, the canopy terminates here at this point.
Any other questions or at this point, the only outstanding item that really hasn't been clarified is the fence, the actual structure, material, exact location of what's being located there.
I think they've shown the fence material.
Right, I guess that's.
There's one possibility.
There's one possibility, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, it's only conceptual and.
Well, I understand there are several reasons they're doing it.
Is that one of the items, can we leave that item up to final plan approval administratively to be decided or would we like to discuss that tonight or get something more final?
Might be interesting what Mr. Tegel, Mr. Tegel thinks of that.
I think I'd like to see in the motion a limit to its height, you know? As far as the material and the amount of transparency, I guess I'd leave that up to the designers to come up with something, whether it's a little bit more opaque in its nature or if it's any more transparent.
What we believe should be the maximum height.
Well, I've heard three feet tonight. I think that would, it would be okay. Now, I want to make sure, we say three feet from what?
From the ground.
I don't want three feet from the top of a plant or, but I think, I think something that would allow someone that's sitting in a chair to be able to see over it as opposed to it cutting your eyesight or your line of vision.
Then I guess we can just include that language in the, in the final motion. Any other thoughts, questions, comments at this point or are we ready?
I just have one more question.
Yes.
On this drawing, what does that rectangle with the two circles represent?
Grease trap.
What did they say? A grease trap? Oh, it's not an obstruction.
On the patio, is that a fire pit there between two rows of the, is that what that is?
Those are, there's one with a number in it, but all the clusters that are in there are seating, seating like coffee table type height.
I think we're ready for a resolution on this and we can include the item, the clarification on the, on the fencing. Mr. Sana.
For the resolution, this is a proposed resolution. It's a suggested resolution. If someone were to make, were to use this as a, as a model to go off of, could they contemplate perhaps saying, provide an updated landscape plan slash streetscape plan prior to final site plan approval?
Sure, we can do that. We'd like to read into the resolution. Mr. Faison.
Resolution number PC dash 2017 dash 09. Resolve that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed Stoney River Steakhouse and Grill located on the south side of Big Beaver, west of Livinoy, part of 101 West Big Beaver Road, section 28, within the BB, Big Beaver District, be granted subject to applicant.
To the following.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Subject to the following. The applicant provide an updated landscape slash streetscape plan prior to final site plan approval.
I would like to add to that.
Sure.
Showing elevations and details of the barrier between the sidewalk and the interior seating area, exterior outside area.
That's fine, that's good.
You're right, no offense.
Yeah, I think the height, I think the wording should be that the height of the fence should not obscure someone, normal height, sitting in a, sitting in a chair. So, it not obscure their vision. It would be below their vision. The sight line. So, depending on how they're meeting the grade, that, that the fence could be that high or it could be that high, you know, it's up to the designer.
Second, Mr. Sanziger. No comments, I'm going to keep please.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kufa?
Yes.
Mr. Sanziger?
Yes.
Mr. Tegel?
Yes.
Mr. Athiedian?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. You're next, Mike.
Looking forward to the grand opening.
Yeah.
What are you projecting as the grand opening?
Ground, yeah.
Well, yeah. Spring, early spring. We appreciate, you know, we appreciate you approving it with the modifications, with all the patients and we'll do what we're responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is on the agenda tonight, preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN 2017 dash 0022, proposed Zen Apartments, northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, part of 888 West Big Beaver, section 21, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District.
We're going to do something a little bit different. We're going to show a brief little vignette, little movie.
Is it popcorn?
Is it a silent movie?
No, there's music.
It's okay for the legal account.
I'm going to start over.
We don't get moving for it often, it's good.
I need to have beer up that popcorn.
So, now we should require that for every.
Thank you. Mr. Carlin.
I don't know how to follow, honestly.
Do you have a song and dance?
So, the applicant tonight is seeking approval for an eight-story, 272 unit apartment building at 888 Big Beaver. I'm actually going to flip the site plan. We should all be fairly familiar with this project, but I kind of want to outline where this, this proposed building fits on the site and context. Do we have a whole site plan in here?
Oh, the whole site plan?
Yeah.
No, if you go to the PowerPoint.
It was in there. It was in there in the packet that you sent, the planning commission.
If you go back.
There's some boardings.
Right there.
So, that's existing conditions.
Anyways, oh, on the line. If the planning commission members, there was a concept plan approved for this site, which included a number of outlaw buildings. The fidelity has been approved, the steak shack's been approved, those are under construction now. This proposed apartment building is located behind those adjacent to Willshire and then connected to the structure that was also approved for this development. The planning commission may be wondering about the size of the apartment building. When the concept plan was initially approved by the planning commission, it was five stories were being proposed. The applicant has added an additional three stories to the building. It meets all zoning requirements, it meets the form-based district, there's no zoning issue with that. One of the issues that came up with it, with the number of three additional stories is how does parking work? The parking study that was done by the applicant and approved by the engineering department indicated a 300-unit apartment building, so it actually factored in for 600 parking spaces just for the apartment building. But there are 272 units even with the three additional stories. So, they're actually, again, in excess of parking than what's going to be required for this. So, jumping from five to eight stories is not a zoning issue at all. It can be approved by the planning commission tonight.
Nor a parking issue.
Nor a parking issue as well. We have reviewed the plan. The plan is consistent with the concept plan approved by the planning commission, the landscape plan is consistent, the parking, obviously, they know is consistent. We do know that the applicant did not submit a photometric plan and that should be submitted as part of the final site plan packet. In regards to the architecture, the architect is here to describe it in more detail. Obviously, you saw the architecture in the video. The applicant proposes brick veneer, aluminum panels, as well as a glass front facade. The apartments will actually be connected directly to the parking deck itself. I'm not exactly sure on what floor. All floors will be connected to the parking deck. And so, we do find that this is in compliance with the concept plan approved by the planning commission. We are recommending approval without any written conditions in our report.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Any questions or, yes, Mr. Faison?
I said a question. You had mentioned that the height is not an issue on the site, the parking would be more of a constraint. I mean, is there a height restriction in terms of number of stories? Like what, what would that, what is that restriction?
Well, there are six different building types on Big Beaver and each one has a different height restriction. The, this scope and scale of project is the largest allowed project, allowed building dense type that we allow in that, in this district. For this type of project, the only height limitation is, is really a factor of parking, is how, if you can park the site enough to provide for the height. So, there's no six stories, seven stories, eight. So there's no six stories, seven stories, eight story minimum, it's whatever it is, whatever the height you can build at to is if you, if you can park it.
Okay, and it's in the Big Beaver District even though it's not one?
Correct. The site itself, it actually fronts on Big Beaver, it's all one parcel, it's all one parcel.
Okay.
So eight stories is the maximum?
No, it can go, it's unlimited height for this, for this particular site, it's unlimited height.
Up to thirteen or something.
It's unlimited height for this particular site because of the, the size and scale of the site, it's the largest, it's lots of largest building form which is unlimited height. The hindrance to that is if can they park the site? You can build an eighty-story building, right, you can park an eighty-story building.
With the eight-story apartment building, do you have any idea how that stands in relation to the eight 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 building that's also on that site?
Thirteen stories.
Thirteen stories, so it's five stories less than the eight eight eight.
So it would be just a little bit shorter then, so maybe two thirds of the way, three fourths of the way?
Three, three fourths, two thirds, somewhere on that range. Yeah.
Okay.
Just compare eight stories to thirteen.
But I don't know how many feet are in a story necessarily, and even if you told me, it doesn't mean a whole lot, I, I'm just trying to think of it.
So depending on the floor plates, the story is anywhere usually from ten to fourteen feet, so I would factor in fifty, fifty feet maybe a little more, fifty feet difference between the top of eight 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 to the top of this apartment building.
Okay, but if you tell me eight 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 is taller and it's just a little bit, I, I can, I can live with that, that's, that's good enough, I was just curious. Because that's gonna be two big tall towering buildings there.
Right, and it's substantially taller than anything else.
Right, right.
So we're gonna have thirteen, and then the seven-story parking deck, eight-story parking deck, eight-story apartment, and then across the street a five-story hotel. There's some, there's some height there.
But all shorter than the Monarch, which is twenty-three stories.
And all shorter than the top of Troy slash PNC building, which is twenty, twenty-five.
Right, I'm trying, what's the, what's the, the hotel across the street?
Five stories, I believe.
It was four.
Both, both hotels are.
It's a four, it's a four, okay.
Oh, you're talking about the.
The two relatively new ones across the street.
Okay, okay, okay.
Across Willshire.
Behind, behind.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The Hilton Garden Inn and.
Yeah.
Something, something, okay, yeah.
Any other question? Oh, yes, Mr. Carlin.
I'm just curious how the, how big are the units? Many square feet and.
Yeah, I'm just curious of what the grace point would be.
May I ask, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
I guess, go ahead.
Jason Crager with Crager Flat Architects, fourteen twelve East Eleven Mount. Units vary from their studios up to three bedrooms and they go from, I brought my own, but, okay, can I flip with this?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I have a couple slides in here that show you prototypical units, but they're studios, one, two, and three bedrooms, they go anywhere from, I think, seven hundred, I'll have to look, to twelve or thirteen hundred square feet, that's the range. Rental prices, rates, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I do know that they wanna be at the upper end of the market. So they, they want this to be a signature building in their portfolio and in the city. So everything that we're looking at is high-end materials, you know, nice, modern designs, quality products, metals, bricks on the outsides, insides will be actual woods, tiles, that'd be really nice.
Sure where the brick is?
Sure. So we have brick up to the fourth floor along here and all along here, and then up along here we have metal panels. And we're showing two different types of metal panels. The exact colors we're working on, we're going through different, you know, design options, but they'll be nice, subtle, high-quality, we're not gonna do anything, you know, landish. But we do picture this as being a signature piece and then some other signature pieces to break it up. You know, it was interesting because we're doing a lot of multifamily right now and it's pretty rare to find somebody, a client who would say, we want metal panels because it's very expensive, but he's like, I want this to be a signature building and in my portfolio for a very long time, I don't wanna worry about maintenance, so I was pretty excited that we get to do this because it's gonna be great, it's still very, very nice. So, but we are going four stories up at the masonry and then, and we're breaking it up, we have balconies that are set in, stepped out, so we feel like we're breaking up the facade in a good way and I think it'll be great when it's, when it's all put together. But we prepared a, a short PowerPoint and actually Ben, he did a great job walking through everything, but if you want, I can go through this, it'll just take a few minutes.
Absolutely.
So actually it was seven, it was two seventy-two, I believe, not two seventy-three, but it's an eight-story building, we have a pool, clubhouse, we have living on the ground floor all the level eight is what was mentioned, we are connected to the parking deck. So what's really great about this is that residents can park in the parking deck and walk right into their level, they, they actually line up so you can walk right in. There's also some surface parking on the north end, I forgot my spaces, I think sixty spaces or something like that, that could be used for guests or residential parking. There's a gym, fitness facility, aerobic center, there's a steam room, sauna, the whole, the concept is zen. Unicorp has a project in Florida, in Orlando that's zen, so it's almost, this is like their zen north, if you will, so the whole concept is spas and everything else, like really, really modern and hip design. Chuck would be here, but, but the hurricane and everything, I think he's a little busy, like no joke, we were talking to them, they don't have any power, they have like a command center set up, so they're working from their cell phones. And then, you know, coffee bar, business center, game room, lounge. Some of the other things that we're adding in here are items in the clubhouse, it's more for like the millennials or the people that live, not so much millennials, but people that work from home. So we have a business center, we have areas that are like almost, almost like little phone booths, they can break out and work there, you know, they could do little meetings, things like that, so it's gonna be a really, really cool, cool ground floor space for these people. And then you saw the, the pool area where we have pool, sauna, we might do a little fire pit, depending on how the fire marshal works with us on that, and outdoor space, you know, just really a great, great, great space.
Just one quick question, I was wondering, when you added the, the floors, was that to add more units? Or, or I was gonna say, was, were you also able to add more of the amenities?
Nope.
So all the amenities were there initially?
The amenities were always there, they wanted about eight to nine thousand square feet of clubroom, or clubhouse, I should say. And in their pro forma, they needed to be as close to three hundred as possible without going on the other end. So we went from a wood constructed building at five stories, which we just did not net out the numbers, period, the, the site just didn't allow it. We changed it to a metal frame building, we were able to go to eight stories, and eight stories is just like a sweet spot with the construction and the building. So we got close enough to the three hundred for them, we're still, you know, below the three hundred, but it works, works good for them.
Okay, thank you.
As mentioned, this is our, our site right here, this is the project location, that's the eight 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 building currently. This is what Ben was talking about as far as the.
Why don't I have this for my apartment presentation?
I wanted to. Just as a quick update, obviously fidelity's just about done, Shake Shack will be finished in September. They're going to demolish the parking deck, I believe, in the next couple weeks.
It's beedhosh, isn't it?
Yeah.
Are they doing it right now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man, okay, we were still working on a logistics plan like a couple days ago, they weren't, they weren't kidding around, are they?
I believe it's beedh.
Okay, no, that's good.
They did right.
That's good. And then.
A broken concrete there.
Okay, good, good. So then, this will be done in the spring. And then the goal is, you know, hopefully this saves us more tonight, the goal is for us to put in the detention system here for the whole site and we wanna try and get footings in before the winter hits. We're gonna cover them up and then as soon as the ground, as soon as it's spring, go vertical. It's, it's important because the, the ground is dry right now, so we're saving a ton of money if we can get this in before the end of the year. In the springtime, it's just a crap shoot to know what the ground's gonna be like and the weather and everything else, so this detention system's millions of dollars, literally, so we're trying to do our best to help out the owners and, and get moving, moving quick. So right now our engineers, in, in hopes of everything going forward, are working on foundation plans for this right now. And then obviously, season's two-yard house, I think that's a spring project, we're not working on that, but we've been involved in the overall site. And we're currently designing a new retail building right here. At one, in the initial, it was two buildings, now there'll be one building because the owner feels he can lease it out easier, he gets more flexibility, and he's just gonna build it on spec. Before, he was waiting for tenants, he says it's easier, he can go faster. He wants to get this done as quickly as possible, so he wants to just build it and then he'll deal with leasing later. If we don't lease it out, we don't know who's going in there, it could stall the rest of all this development in here. They're putting in curves and gutters right now in here and all of this will be done this year, all the streetscape and everything, so you'll be able to see that, and then this will be done next year. So next spring, all of this hopefully will be, will be done, because it's the game plan. And then this will follow, because that'll take a year and a half to build. Existing, well, not so much existing site conditions anymore, but.
Question.
Yeah.
What are they doing with the old eight eight tower? I mean, I've seen them working on it early in the morning, is it gonna be a different color?
It is white.
They're painting it white.
It is gonna be white.
Yes.
And have they found out what the problem is with the finish staying on the panels and that?
That's a very good question. So I, I was not a part of any of that, what I heard from talking to, to the owner, Chuck, they did not prep the surface properly. And so apparently they know what to do, they're prepping it, they're painting it, and he has a warranty on it of some sort, so let's hope that it's, it's fixed, because, yeah, I used to work right across the street at a design firm and I, I watched it fall apartment years.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I know what you're talking about, that's why I questioned them, they brought it in before, I questioned that.
So this here's the ground floor, it, also architectural site plan, our clubhouse is here, so the, this is the parking deck right over here. So in the parking deck, we have an elevator and stair core here that takes you right into where the clubhouse is. We also have a stair tower here and then a stair and elevator core here, I believe, and then right here. I say I believe because I'm losing my sight the older I get, I think when we started this, I didn't need glasses and now I do. Yeah, thanks, seriously. And then, so as I said, this is about eight to nine thousand square feet of clubhouse, we have office staff here and we have more amenities back here, the gym is here with a little outdoor patio and we're screening it with, with bushes and things like that. I mean, it's really just gonna be an outdoor sitting area, I just wanted activity out there, I thought that was very important. Likewise, up here in the northeast corner, we had, we thought would be a cool little park, packet park for people and it's really just gonna be a space for the residents. This is our pool, sauna, covered lounge area, and then we have, this is still being worked out, but we're gonna design a zen garden in there for them. We're working with our landscape architects and know what can frost right now to work that out, I figure that'll be another month or so going back and forth with the owner. This is the just regular floor plan, so as I mentioned, clubhouse, living units, this is our back of house, if you will, so we have, that's where our trash chute dumps, discharges into a compactor, we have space back there for loading, we also have space back there for move-ins. And what I like about this is that all of that's controlled onsite here, so we can get trucks in and out, if they, if they have a move-in day, they can cone these off and they can, you know, park a, you know, Mayflower truck there or whatever. This is still a drive-through, there is an easement there. So we did meet with building, planning, fire several weeks back, just to get up, get everyone to take a look at it before we go too far, and this was accepted, we, there were no issues with anyone we met with. This is a typical floor, so the units, there's a corridor in the, in the center here and we have a mix of all the different one-twos, threes, studios. This right here is the connection into the parking deck, you can see right here. So elevations, so again, the colors are being finalized, but we will do masonry and then metal panels, we're gonna have storefront glass along here, and then we'll have aluminum windows for the rest of the building, Quaker, Wojen, you know, a good, good product for a multifamily building.
CMU. From Michigan University.
Oh, right, right here, that'll be, we have CMU there, it's either gonna be concrete block or a large format brick, but something that differentiates this area here from the rest of the building up here.
Did you say burnage block? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's gonna be a burnage block? Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I'll put that in.
Architecture humor is hilarious.
I got it. I got it, I love burnage block, I really do, I got it.
I thought it was like some, like weight, weight, not, burnage block.
Yeah.
Bring your bags along.
That's why we have you.
No, that's good, that's good. This is our photometric plan, it's really reading poorly, but I, I didn't have, I just got this today, I didn't have a chance to study it, according to my electrical engineer, we're meeting the, the foot candles around the perimeter, we'll get this to, to city staff to, to review and make sure we're in compliance. Typical, this is studio, so you're seven hundred square feet, there's balconies on, on every unit. So here's a one-bedroom. Two-bedroom, there's a three-bedroom, the three-bedrooms on the corners because of space. And then we have some learnings, which you saw the video, so these are just learnings from the. Game room. That's it.
Other question.
Sure.
How were the windows treated, as far as, are they fixed, are they closed windows or do they allow any screens or, we're just curious.
Jumpers?
With treatments?
We'll have some hoppers and, jumpers. We'll have some hoppers, hopery one of those twenty-two. We will have, they will be operable, yeah, and, and, and those that aren't operable, let's say they're in the studio, you have a sliding door, so we have fresh air in the, in the building.
Did you mention there's one down south, down Florida, is this a prototype? Obviously the shape has to comply with the site constraints, but i- is basically the, the concept and the design a prototype that's already been on the market?
No, no, the concept is really just the, the concept, if you will, of zen, so if you Googles Orlando, Florida zen, luxury living, you'll see it, it's, we're, we're really borrowing more from. You know, this, these items in here, you know, the, the buildings, the building down south, it's, I don't know how many are in a unit, but they're multiple buildings.
Okay.
Maybe, I think, three stories apiece, two stories apiece, that type of a thing.
So this is really a new product?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, what they wanna do is, as they keep developing and doing things across the country is almost brand this in a way, it's zen living, maybe it's zen living west or something like that, so.
Very attractive, very nice building.
Just wanna add to what John said, I love the striking design, matter of fact, I really like how you carried the inside, very dramatic, sharp edge design into the interior spaces with the same angles, that was really nice, really well done inside, now you really carried the theme, you know, totally from the inside and outside and just, just absolutely delightful design.
All my designers, they get like.
Beautiful done.
Will, will there be any food, corks or any type of?
No, there, there is a kitchen in here, those in these multifamily developments are more symbolic, there might be a party or something like that, but they're not really cooking, or maybe somebody, one of the residents can rent it out for a little party or things like that, but they're not serving food to anybody here.
There's no coffee shop or breakfast here?
No, 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 they'll have a, usually that's where they, they sign the leases, I mean, a lot of these things, the amenities, the gyms usually get used, I think these business centers will get used nowadays, I'm allowed, you know, you might, I guess, shoot pool, but every owner I talk to who does these, they're just like, it's really us, it's like a lure, you know, like we show them all these great things, you know, it's, they don't get used as, as, but you have to do them, so. But the pool will get used. Three, three months out of the year.
Who's the market, target market for this product?
That would be a great one for, you know, really what they're going for is, I'm probably gonna misspeak, but really a higher end market, probably, they're, they're not going after, after younger people, although they do have some studios that would go for that, but I think they want business people who live in the area type thing, maybe empty nesters, they mentioned that before, people.
These are apartments, they're not condominiums.
They're apartments, absolutely, yeah.
Did you mention earlier there is an actual move-in elevator that's dedicated for that or is it just a larger elevator that?
Larger, larger elevator, it's a service elevator, but it, it's a four thousand pound out of thirty, thirty-five hundred, it's, it's a heavier elevator, it's larger to carry, but it's not a freight.
It's a service elevator.
So it can be used by residents, but if, on a move-in date, they would probably block it off, put the mats on it, and that's just what they use for that.
Is that only the one on the north?
Correct.
So the ones at the parking deck and the other interior one, they're smaller?
Just for the people, yep. Yeah, every elevator we have complies with stretcher, but just one of them is larger and they're all higher cabs, they're nine-foot cabs, so you can technically still move furniture in them, but one service, that's a little bigger.
I don't know if you can answer the question, but did you say that there was, there were trash chutes?
Yes, I can answer that question.
Okay, so there are trash chutes?
Correct.
So we got an email from a resident in Troy who mentioned the idea of not only having the trash chutes, but introduction recycling, like people should be able to use a chute or something to do the recycling. Is that, is that possible?
Yes, it, it is possible, typically what I've seen is they'll have bins on floors for recycling and then there's, there, you know, they have janitors and people who work on, work here all the time, go around and collect it and then they take it down to bins down, downstairs, then gets picked up. So we haven't really gotten that far on this project yet, but that's what we're doing on another job recently, and that's why.
Is to do the recycling chutes?
Uh, no, it's not a recycling chute, they're bins. They're bins.
Oh, bins?
Yeah, and either they have it, there's two different ways to go. We just haven't gotten this far. But either, no matter what, we will recycle here, but you'll either, the residents will bring their recycling downstairs and then there's bins downstairs, or you can do it on the floor and that's just once a day it gets cleaned out by maintenance people. The chute's just for trash. Or what they can do is they can dump everything down the chute and it gets sorted down the road, but I've never seen that before, yeah.
I wouldn't think that you would want to do that. I would think that you would want to have either a separate recycling chute, which to me seems like a fabulous idea, or you would want to have it on every floor because I think humans have a tendency just inherently to be a little lazy. And the idea of having to carry your recycling all the way downstairs when you trash chute is.
Probably not in the trash.
Right, exactly, exactly. If you want to promote the recycling, then you have to make it as effort.
I agree, 100%.
As possible. And, yeah, it would be great if, if you could really, you know, think about ways in which you could incorporate.
Absolutely, yeah.
Innovative recycling ideas.
Does Troy have it set up where, well, actually, this is going to be a maintenance thing anyway, but I'm just, I'd say, can you, do you have like one recycling bin for?
Yes. They're all branded, all this, last few months.
Okay, okay. I'll bring that up. That's a, that can be great. Actually, just have a chute, two chutes.
Two chutes, I agree.
Separate.
Separate bins in the hallway is not going to work.
Because you have to separate your paper and cardboard and then your glass or your plat, I mean, you just, it all just goes.
It's all done, yeah.
It all just, just goes in.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Kren. The whole idea of, for this product to actually request the residents to leave a bin in the hallway for once a day pickup, I'm not sure that's.
Luxury.
As an owner, that's what the owner.
For the clientele you're looking for.
Right, right, right. I agree. So I think that's something that we'll, we'll definitely do. That or like, let me talk to them if I like that idea of doing.
The idea to incentivize recycling would be to actually make it as easy as possible for every floor to actually dedicate that recycling chute over down. I think that, that would.
Did the, did the applicant receive this communication? From Scotty?
No.
Because the, one of the things that kind of stood out to me is, are you restricting this to people who are handicap?
Restricting.
Are you restricting tendency to those that are handicapped?
No, I mean, you can't restrict.
You can't, it's state law.
I would hope not, but you don't have any handicap bathrooms in there, any of these?
No, I mean, we're going to have to. By law, we're going to have, I think it's 10%.
I thought so too.
That's type B and then type A is another percent. So, yeah, we'll have to do that, absolutely.
The other thing he points out is that the hallways, are they too long or too narrow?
Always a long, that's for sure.
Could there be a way to break that up with light wells? How far is the walk from the parking to the individual units? I, you know, I don't think all these points are necessarily relevant, but I think you should definitely consider it.
Yeah, we will, absolutely. As far as the hallways, typically what we'll do is we'll, we'll break it up with different heights and we'll stagger them and things like that. We'll add a lot of lighting in them. So that, that point's well, well taken.
Dan, one of the things, if you look at, in large, the floor plans, they've reset the doors so it's not like a straight shot wall that you can entrance and steps in a couple of feet and I think they can do some things with the ceilings.
I like some of the better hotels doing everything, yeah, that's good.
Mr. Tensley. I have a question for Brent. Obviously, the density is increasing substantially on the site. I was just curious on the impact on the utilities and I, have you had any discussions with the engineering department on the sewer and water systems and?
I know that their engineer has been working closely with our engineer from, for about a year, so I have, I don't participate in all those conversations.
But you know that's not a vacation going on.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I would hope so.
Yeah.
Well, pigging it back on that, I kind of wish Chuck was here because when we, this board previously approved the concept plan, 901 Wilshire and 888 Big Beaver were involved in the lawsuit regarding that detention fund. And I, at the time, Chuck assured this board that, you know, the engineering, that his engineers would work with our engineers to ensure that stormwater and detention would remain at the levels that they are now. I mean, that, as far as we know, that's still the assurance from?
That is. I can answer that. That is, yes, we are maintaining the same amount. And that lawsuit was cleared up, yeah.
So they haven't appealed? I know, because I, I went to the bench trial, so I was there and I read the opinion, so there's, you guys have a resolution with 901 Wilshire, they're not appealing? Or you don't know?
I can't speak to that. I try and stay out of those matters.
Me too.
Good luck.
I have one last question for Mr. Kren. Is, is the recycling something that we could put in a resolution on, under this form-based district? A condition or, or no?
It's a, if it's a reasonable condition, I mean, this is still a site plan review. It's still, you know, by right at this point, but it's, it sounds like the applicant is willing to consider.
I, I think it sounds like he, he thinks it's a good idea and I think that I saw a lot of nodding heads around the table that we're all sort of in agreement that it's important and in particular, when you think about the density coming out of that building to not have the recycling.
It sounds like the clientele is actually going to demand something like that anyways.
Absolutely, yeah.
As we often, or the planning director often says, you know, this commission speaks through its resolutions, so I don't think it's, I think it would be wise to include that.
The only thing, and I agree with all the conversation, the only thing, I'm not an architect and I don't know what, you know, if, if there is such a thing as a, that's been invented or that's, that is a thing that is a recycling chute. If there isn't, I want to trademark it right away because I think it's a great idea. But I'm just, if we, if we were to condition approval on that and there's, and it's impossible to engineer it, that's where I kind of hesitate, but, I mean, he's here listening to us, he's agreed that it's a good idea, he's agreed to consider it. So I think if the resolution were to say something like, consider, you know, recycling chute rather than required as a condition, I think that, that may be the best way to go.
Or even quote, strongly encourages.
Sure, yeah, something like that, I mean.
I'm just asking, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just.
No, I think it's, I think it's a good point. I just, I would, I would not want them to be in violation of site plan approval if they can't get it done. They try, but they can't, and then they got to, you know.
They're going to come back.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
I, I, may I, I know that this is something that Chuck would want to go after. He wants this to be a great place. I think that's a great idea.
Oh, it's not mine, it's Plato.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, whatever.
It was me who here, that's why.
Scott Beaton is the one that brought it up and I think it's an excellent point and I, I fully support what Scott says on that.
And I also hear your point, Brent, you know, to be handcuffed to that, I want to make sure that we're, we go back into our homework first, you know. But I, I think that's something, bringing it up, oh, of course, you know, so figure it out, Jason, that's what he's going to say.
It sounds like a really good solution to.
I love it. I love it, it's great, yeah.
Hi, Mr. Slavodan. If there's a thing that's needed out there for recycling, get on it and then, you know, you can go live the easy life.
Yeah, that's right.
Rent one of these, you know, luxury apartment.
Right. I gotta go talk to Pat.
Necessity is the mother of invention.
But are you going to call the recycling chute, S-H-O-O-T?
Whoa, yeah.
Are you ready, guys? Are we ready for the question?
Any other questions, comments on this, or are we, we going to go with the resolution, Mr. Kren?
Preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN 2017-0022, proposed zen apartments, northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, part of 888 West Big Beaver Road, section 21, currently zoned BB Big Beaver District. Resolved that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed zen apartments located on the northeast corner of Big Beaver, oh, wait, I got some rereading, pardon me, Big Beaver and Crooks, part of 888 West Big Beaver Road, section 21, within the BB, within the BB Big Beaver District, and granted, subject to the following suggestion that the owners, we strongly encourage the owner to consider putting in a recycling chute for the residents to use for recycling. Is that okay?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Edmonds. The local Ms. Harniki?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kren?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzicca?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Adpedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much.
Look forward to it. Your filings are being forwarded, are scheduled for this year, the fall?
Yeah, if I can drop faster, Chuck, go ahead and drop faster. He wants, he wants a foundation permit this year, so. We're going as fast as we can. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Shall you check this up?
You probably have to.
Item number seven, public comment for items on the agenda. Anyone in the audience who should speak on the agenda, seeing that we'll move to planning commission comments. Mr. Faison.
No comments.
Mr. Tagel.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Koopa.
I always have some mistakes, I bet. In the latest Troy today, there's some really nice graphics of things that are happening and statistics. It would be nice to see some of our projects and, and what's coming up included there. I don't know how, but I don't have anybody to look at their Troy today, but it's very nice. But it would be nice to have some planning information in there as well, like a one-page or, because we've been doing a lot of work here. We've been doing a lot of work. It would be nice to see some of that there.
Every reporter will be all over something like that. I'm looking over your shoulder at our friend Terry. She's, she's giving me the, the three love.
She's, let's take her to the next issue.
You're not going to get any more good quotes going on.
Mr. Kren.
I got a letter from one of our former planning commissioners and he got a, he was looking at an article that showed that buildings, homes especially, had a higher resale value if they complied with LEED requirements in the neighborhood of 25 to 35% more value when they resold. So he said, basically, it would have been nice that Troy implemented some kind of encouragement for LEED residential homes and I just thought I'd throw that out there as a comment from a former planning commissioner.
Mr. Sanzicca.
Just a couple of quick comments. I'm really encouraged by the developments. They're just astonishing, the quality and quantity and just, to sail out of our planning department or consultant on the effort that's been put into the master plan and into the development at Troy. Yeah, I mean, I did notice on corporate drive, my, as I drive by that little side of the northwest corridor of, from a drive in Crooks, there's still no action over there and there's a lot of materials.
Still a lot of sewer pipes sitting there.
Lot of pipes sitting there, yeah. And I'm just curious, if Brent hasn't heard any more about that. I brought that up before and it's just, it's really a nice one, I really.
It is, it's, that and the, and the site across the street are priorities. The Med Hotel I'm talking about, the Med Hotel needs, needs to be taken care of. We're in dialogue with the applicant for the site you're talking about. He, every time we talk to him, he's close to getting financing, he's close to starting, he's this, he's that. We're aware of the issue.
Which site are we talking?
We're talking about.
Upper Drive, like, were they, I said, 5 exits?
Crooks and New King, north, northwest corner.
Yeah.
It's a nice order, the pipes have been there for a while. They've been there, actually, he was supposed to start a while ago, that's why the pipes are there. He's at the point now where, and our engineer is on top of this as well, Scott Finley is all, all over this, he's in regular dialogue with the applicant. It's to the point now where he's got to be able to prove to us that those pipes are still usable moving forward because they've been exposed for a year. So I don't know if there's been activity or there's dialogue in the last couple of weeks, you know, I can, I can research it and get back to you next meeting, give you an update, but we're, we're all over it.
Good thinking.
It's, it's, it's on site.
Ms. Cruz.
I'm just curious, is, has there been any progress, talk, anything about that Aloft hotel that was supposed to go in the parking lot there of the PNC Tower? Is that still a go?
The.
Go ahead.
The developer of the Aloft ran into an issue with the owner of the PNC building in regards to a parking issue and the deal, apparently they're still trying to work out details and for a lease agreement to use the site, where he wants to use the site for the hotel. So it hasn't died yet, but they're working through some legal issues.
Okay, okay. Well, I can see where the parking is going to be a challenge because I park there. It, it can be challenging for sure. I just was curious because we approved that a long time ago and, I mean, I've not seen anything that remotely looks like activity.
There is no.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is there any expiration date on approval?
The site plan and three-year expiration deadline, they have, obviously they have a couple of years till that. We, we had a conversation with the, with the developer pretty recently. He said, yeah, I'm still trying to move forward with the, with the project. It's just trying to work out some of these deals with the owner of the PNC site, the top of Troy site, and they're, they're at larger heads on that.
You mentioned a three-year expiration. Is that three years for the site to be completed or for?
The language in the ordinance itself, it's basically before they, they need to continue towards working on progress, so basically submit building plans, get issued building plans, and that's three years.
Is Amber past three years now?
Add two.
I'm thinking it's pretty dark, what happens?
That's from when they start.
Mr. Hudson.
I'm pleased to see that we've added two more high-quality projects to the city of Troy. It's a great occurrence.
It is.
Mr. Kren.
Brief late Tuesday, I will be heading down to federal court to argue the Tollbrook matter. That's the McClure, that's all I'm going to say about that, but I just wanted to let you all know that, that argument is Tuesday in front of Judge Holtzman. And Mr. Hudson passed along to Brent, who forwarded to me, an interesting case, it's unpublished court appeals opinion out of Grand Traverse Sugar Court, but it, it talks about special use permits and the importance, I think what Mr. Hudson wanted to, wanted to stress is the importance of making findings and, you know, when we have these discussions around the table and if, you know, we know something may be headed toward a lawsuit, it's important to really make clear findings. This lawsuit, they actually went through and their, their staff up in Grand Traverse, This lawsuit, they actually went through and their staff up in Grand Traverse, it's township of Garfield, went through and made a general findings of fact and a specific findings of fact associated with their potential lawsuit. And then the board actually then approved or disproved or modified, amended those findings of fact. So thank you for passing that along. It has some parallel.
I thought it might be applicable to some businesses in Troy.
On a more serious note, Brent and I have decided that we are going to rent all these apartments, Zen, and on our combined salary, we'll probably afford to...
You're only getting a one, you're only getting a one?
That's all I can afford, studio.
Yeah, we asked, I asked both architects to come this evening and make a presentation. And, boy, the second one really knocked it out.
First one was weak.
Yeah.
Very weak.
The drawings weren't accurate. He really didn't, I mean, showing his pictures, it really had no relationship to what they would have been doing.
But the movie, the PowerPoint, the expedition, the materials, I mean, that's how you do it.
I think they raised the bar once again on a presentation with that movie. I mean, once you get an animation that's, you know, we're starting to cross the threshold almost into that virtual reality presentation. I mean, that's what we're getting.
Well, they did the same thing with, you know, the original cuts.
Right, right.
We just need Jason Krieger to do all of our applications.
That is extremely helpful.
Is it expensive?
Aerial, an aerial view, is that...
Define expensive. It is defined expensive. I mean, what do you mean? For a project like that? Absolutely not.
Does it add like $100,000 to it?
Oh, no, 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 no. To come up with a movie like that?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. I mean, it's certainly some time, and it's over and above what normal fees are covering. But for a project like that, I wouldn't think it's, I mean, you know, you have to weigh the benefit of putting the time and money into something like that, and I think it's very, it pays for itself.
And then once you have a template, it's easier just to insert, you know, what?
Depends on design.
The design's different, but you have a template, okay, this page is going to be this, this is going to be that, just drop and insert.
But once you build a model, once you create the model, then you can create whatever view, you know, you kind of create the movement through the model or around the model.
It's very impressive. I like it.
Brent and I also met with, we had a meeting today with a number of projects, and we let all of them know that the expectation moving forward is to be a little more descriptive in design and that these questions are coming. So we are starting to prep people as we meet with them, that that's what the planning commission is looking forward to.
And of the one hour per meeting we had today, 45 minutes we talked about dumpsters, so.
I'm telling you, it's important. You just don't want the trash to just be out there and gross. You just don't. It takes away from everything else.
And every time you go to a commercial establishment, invariably, the trash dumpsters, gates are open. They just do not automatic, they just never close them.
Well, the interesting thing about the restaurant was...
Who wants to complain about it?
The internal.
Yes, I loved that.
We hear that that's an issue, and then that's their motto.
Can I speak to the applicant for a second, though?
Yes.
I'm not sure. When I go into my, when I go under a restaurant...
You don't want that table next to the trash room?
I don't want to be at the one next, exactly. And I would like to see what it looks like, you know, a year or two after operations begin, you know, what, where, what does it look like from the inside view, you know? I don't, that's, I'm not saying it's bad, but I'm saying there's, instead of being on the outside, now you've got all of that.
But you have solid walls.
I'm just guessing it's working as, it looks like a high-end establishment.
If you can't smell the trash, and I don't think the diner's going to complain about it, is it?
So there's a restaurant that I go to quite frequently, and they've got the treatment, the dumpster that's in the roll top part of the building. And I would say that 65 to 70% of the time I'm there, that thing's up. Even that isn't kept closed.
Wow.
So it really boils down to human nature and if someone responsible to shut the darn door.
We're inherently lazy.
One of the things that...
Wouldn't self-actuated gates take care of that?
We're talking roll-down doors. Those are lighter, copperated.
It's screen entrances for people that are putting trash in so they don't have to open the gates. So you kind of, you kind of walk around into the, you know, dump the trash, walk out. So the only time those gates have to be open is when the truck is coming to empty the bin. Because if you need to keep them open every time somebody walks a bag of trash out there, I think that's the time, you know, the, you know. But there are ways to overcome that, and not expensive ways. I mean, it's not, depending on any mechanics or any electronics or anything like that, it's just a little different approach into that trash area.
Yeah.
One thing I forgot to ask, was there any limitation on, like, children in the Zen development? Will they allow families in the three-bedroom?
Three-bed.
Were there facilities there for kids, like, nursery?
Six and below, probably.
I just, I just really didn't, it hurt me at the time that they asked that, but I, you know, I'm sure it's going to be for an upper-end family. I don't know if they would accommodate, you know, if you hire in professionals with small children, but I, I would think it has some accommodations there for children.
Sure.
I don't wear suits.
They can't. I'm sure that's probably families might not be their target market, but I'm sure that...
They can discriminate.
Right, but I'm sure that they will probably get some children and families in that, in that building.
I would think if families were their target market, they might have designated one area for an actual daycare. I mean, they expect 50, 60, 70.
I didn't see there.
I didn't see that, yeah.
With respect to asking more from the people that you meet with, clearly, I'm a person that benefits from the scale. Try and show me how tall something, you know, especially on projects that are really tall like that, how that fits into the stuff that it's around. And we've had that in some of the other presentations. I do find that helpful if you can show me something other than the, oh, Karen, it's going to be 320 feet tall. I mean, I can't, to me, I can't imagine 320 feet. I have no frame of reference to that.
It really doesn't apply to a project like this, but look at the people and the automobiles. That'll start to give you a sense of scale for buildings, obviously not eight stories, that's not going to help. But those are the kind of things that help people understand what the scale of the project is, or how long the wall is or whatever.
Right, as sad as it sounds, Amber has become my frame of reference for the four-story. So, you know, I'm thinking, okay, so then it's going to be twice as tall as Amber. I mean, because I don't otherwise deal with that, scale, height, stuff in my job. And so when you said 15 stories or 13 stories, right, on the 888 building, I went, oh, well, I sit on the 15th floor, so I'm two floors taller. I'm just telling you, that's kind of how my crazy brain works when it comes to scale.
I agree with you. I like the fill, but I thought that was missing. I didn't think it put the building in context. There was a lot of aerial views looking down as opposed to...
But a 3D, wouldn't a 3D rendering solve that? Showing it in perspective to the existing?
Sure, that'd be great, yeah.
That's what I think we've got to insist.
What you guys are not going to be able to capture on these 3D renderings is the reality. If, once that building is built, and your perception as a person, taking in what it can take in, you'll never capture that in the rendering. The rendering's viewing angle is not like your viewing angle when you're standing, walking down a streetscape.
I see. That's good to know.
Yeah.
So what, what is it, then? I'm not understanding. I thought it would be like, when we saw the McClure Road project, how they showed approaching the project from the north and how it would look. I mean, wasn't that what they, they were representing that to be?
Yes, and I'm not saying it's an inaccurate representation. All I'm saying is your human perception is going to be different than what that model will show, that 3D model will show. It'll be close.
Okay, so it's a directional thing, right?
Well, yes, because when you're in a space, you sense, you know, like, for example, if I'm looking at this corner, I can sense that.
You sense everything that's around you, right?
You're not going to get that in a model. I mean, you know, it's kind of like the difference between a fisheye lens on a camera versus a telephoto lens, you know, I mean, it's your perception. What can you perceive?
I understand.
Yeah, just on a final thought, I just want to echo what Mr. Hudson said. I think we're, we would all agree that tonight's project, especially the Zen Apartments, I mean, that just take it to a different level for the city in terms of the quality of development and, again, filling in that gap for development that Troy hasn't seen for a while in new construction, or that quality of apartments, and the density, the density.
It's even in place, if you take a look of McClure's Big Beaver to the corner, where you've got the other tall buildings in perspective. I mean, it blends right in. I think that's turning out to be a great corner in Troy.
It is.
From the opposite.
Something to be excited about, I mean, definitely.
Is everybody going to the joint city council meeting on October 17th?
Everybody? Anybody not able to make that meeting?
Can I make a suggestion? It may not be worthwhile, but I was thinking, occasionally, we'll get a project before us for discussion. And Ben or Brent will say, "Consider these things." List four or five items on there that makes you think about the whole project. That, when I saw the outline in the resolution last night for this joint meeting, they get five topics in there. But I think they should be fleshed out by somebody in city administration as what you and Brent have done. And that is, "Consider these questions," and hopefully, there'll be a discussion instead of, what are you just sitting there twiddling your thumbs and listening to somebody speak and then move on to the next subject?
Yep, good point.
I think that's a good point, especially on the item on agenda where there is that big discrepancy, the two items of conditional resuming, where we had different perspectives, different approaches of how we saw the projects, and we voted unanimously on both. And I think that those two projects might be the ones that will be, like, take up more of the time of the discussion. I'm just, you know, I'm just seeing that that might happen. So maybe to actually bring to the table some of the questions that we debated at our meetings coming to the conclusions that we did. So we can, with the questions and the answers, we can present our perspective of why we voted the way we did. That might, that's a good point.
Agreed.
I just wanted to say, I was very happy to be at dinner with Mr. Savadant and Mr. Harlile and Mr. Edmonds at Nehe's. My thinking is, yet another steakhouse on Big Beaver, where I can't really find anything to eat. But we had a really great experience at Nehe's, I think.
We did.
Thanks.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
So if you all want to do that again, maybe before the end of the year, we'll meet up ahead of time at Nehe's, and I can guide you through the menu.
Can we make this a little more official? I mean, let us know, remind us.
Yeah, she suggested I email everybody, but I wasn't even at my desk. Seriously?
You can be free, because the attorney would have said, "Wait a minute."
You did it there, that's amazing, right?
Yeah, we got to be, we got to be a little careful, but we'll have, let's have one against them.
Well, the 30th, we have a meeting, maybe we can keep...
We can, can we stagger 15 minutes to 31 minutes?
So Claire, next time...
I do like the idea, Karen. I do like the idea. Don't they usually get it before the six o'clock meeting?
I think they do.
Maybe we should suggest...
I'm going to put a bug in the ear of the person, and I think that'd be great to have that food. That was fantastic.
It was fun. It really was. Well, especially, I had actually gone in that restaurant before. It was completely overwhelmed by the menus. It just seemed like hundreds of items. Didn't understand any of them, you know, even though there were pictures. So when I heard that, you know, Papa had said that she would help Brent and Ben go there, I said, "Would you mind if I just tag along?" And I really did learn a lot of stuff. And then Papa, afterwards, she texted me with all the things that we had. You know, it's vegetarian, vegetarian, Indian street food, is my understanding. And even though Beaumont doesn't recommend that, Beaumont Health. It was really delicious, absolutely delicious. And there's still other things to explore there, yeah.
Yeah.
It's on Rochester between Monlake and Wells.
Where the old Marinelli's was.
Oh, okay.
You can't miss it.
I didn't even know that. Now, it was closed.
So there's really a nice sign on I-75 when you go north that says, "Vegetarian is more than just vegetables."
Yes, that's true.
I did go to Eddie's last night, and it was fantastic, as far as...
For dinner or for the street?
For dinner. It was phenomenal.
This is, I think it must have gotten a raise.
He's going to move into the Zen apartment.
Okay, we're ready, we're meeting adjourned. Thank you.